Today's Monday, March 24th. This is a Binghamton City Council Work Session. I call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Rathmore. And Councilmember Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
So our first presenter tonight is Chief Engineer Rob Lake, Ron Lake, I'm sorry, on RL 25-67, and that is in the Public Works Committee, and I'll hand it over to the Chairman, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Council President. Ron, do you want to give us an overview of what you got here in front of us?
Yeah, this is a resolution to authorize us to hire Barton and Lojoudis to take care of the contract administration for the Main Street Safety Project. They are the ones who did the design, so we need them to answer the questions that come up during construction and take care of those type of things.
Okay, is this, and then this deviated a little bit from the original budget?
No.
For the project, or?
Their original budget was just for design.
Okay.
This is now for construction administration. We have hired McFarland Johnsons to do the construction inspection.
Okay. I don't have any other questions about this RL besides the project in general. I know there was a lot of work that was done already to redo the concrete on the corners. Is this going to impact all that work that was done for like on the sidewalks, on the corner of the sidewalks? A lot of that was like tore up and re-poured, and it had a nice steady ramp.
This project hits every intersection from Front Street all the way to the JC line. So we'll do all safety improvements, all new crosswalks, all new handicap ramps.
So.
I don't think we've done any work on Main Street.
I think there's like, I feel like every single corner has had. Yeah, those new, those new ramps, they're not like big ramps, but they're the transition from the, the road to the sidewalk.
Yeah, and that, that since I've been here, I've tried to avoid Main Street, knowing this was coming up.
I, I'm.
We've done a lot all over town, yes.
Right.
But I've tried to stay off of Main Street.
I think there's some on Main Street, so.
There might be.
If there, if there are, then we're going to be redoing those?
If they don't work with a new safety plan, because there's going to be bump out some things.
Right. Oh, that's a bummer.
So everything is, everything is going to be for pedestrian safety as we go through.
Right. Does everybody know what I'm talking about? The, is that accurate, Councilman Kavanaugh?
Right.
The sidewalks have been updated at the edge of them next to the road, many of them on Main Street. Now they have nice white concrete.
I don't want to commit myself. I mean, there's certainly like by McDonald's, for example, there's the whole upgraded crossing there with the signs and the lights and everything.
Yes.
Yes.
But I think, I think that was done by DOT.
Okay.
I think that might be the crux of the question, what projects are owned by DOT that have already moved forward versus what this represents that will move forward that the city will be authorizing?
Or it could have been that they were required to put that in as part of their site plan review, because I know we didn't do it.
Does this project take into account what has been done by DOT, so we're not duplicating that effort and that cost?
It, it would if it's not within like the last two or three years. This project has been in design for about six years. So something that was done after they went through and did all their surveying, it might be there, but then if it's still, if it works, then we won't redo it. We just won't pay for that.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any, we can move past that, and I can follow up with an email or something, but.
So Ron, I just on the, the end cost of this, the design supplement versus the construction support, this is 14.6 for construction support. The other part, the design supplement is 86,200.
It's, it's something that they're asking extra for that I'm not willing to give them at this point.
The 86,200?
Yes, that's why you only see the 14,000.
Oh, okay. All right, so they, they're proposing a supplement of $101,000, and you've pushed back?
Yeah, the 86 for the design. I have pushed back on it. I don't think that's a fair number, so I have not brought it to you.
Okay.
I've tried to settle with them for something much lower, and so far they haven't given, but I'm not willing at this point to give them that 86,000.
But you are willing to, I mean, this construction support number for what they're doing in?
Well, the 14,000 I need them for.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Ron.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is Tito Martinez, Assistant Director of Planning, and I will hand this over to the Chair of the Planning Committee, Councilmember Rathmore.
Thank you, President Dundon, welcome. This is RL 2568, an ordinance authorizing the sale of 193 Matthew Street. Tito, would you mind representing?
Yeah, I'm here with Madeline Chantello, who's going to be taking over the administration of the side lot program going forward. But right now, we're here to present two side lots to be sold to neighboring properties, first being 193 Matthew Street that will be sold to the owner of 191 Matthew Street for use as residential yard space.
So 193 Matthew Street, as far as I understand, it was previously a 13-unit apartment building, all of which would have been considered affordable housing, was consideration given to redevelopment of this site?
So, do you know when the side lot letters were sent out for this? Early February, okay. I know that there's been interest from that property owner in this property going back some time, and when the opportunity came to make this a side lot and letters were sent out, this person was very interested. Would comment, he'd be a good steward of the property. As far as any consideration being given to redevelop, you mean post demo or rehabbing it prior to demolition?
I'd go for either.
Okay, so I, I don't have details on it. As far as I know, it was demolished because it had to be. As far as redeveloping the site post demo, we are looking at vacant city lots throughout the city for, for use through the, with the block by block program. There's no shortage of lots that we could redevelop through that program. This particular lot is, is not being considered because of the interest via the side lot program.
I think while there may be no shortage of vacant lots, there is certainly a significant shortage of deeply affordable housing. So my hesitancy with moving this forward would be that no redevelopment has been considered. And I think, I mean, we're in the thousands in terms of deficits when it comes to deeply affordable housing, and so any potential viable lot, which this one, again, previously hosted 13 units. So that gives me pause.
I had, I had a question. It's already knocked down already?
Yes.
Okay, it was, it was an Anzaru property, correct? Yes, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, because that's in my district.
That's a great point to make, like what has been the plan when it comes to these Anzaru properties, when it, I mean, they previously housed humans. And we haven't seen a represented paper trail or protocol when it comes to decisions, and I understand, Tito, that this is not necessarily all within your purview. But I think it's worth stating that this, again, falls under the lack of a strategic plan to redevelop sites where ownership has been transferred. And I would, again, reiterate the urgency when it comes to the increases in homelessness that we've seen within the city and the lack of a plan to develop deeply affordable housing.
If it makes a difference, the building that was there was not conforming, so that couldn't, that many units couldn't be rebuilt there necessarily today.
Unless a waiver came into play, correct?
Unless a use variance was granted, but it would have to meet the, some pretty rigorous tests for the zoning board to be able to grant that use variance.
Even though, even though it's already been, there's already 13 apartments there, you would still?
Yeah, at this point, once, once there's no use on that property, once the building is gone and the land use is gone, anything going forward has to be conforming with our current code.
I was talking about before, before it was knocked down.
Would rehabbing it have been allowed? Yeah, if there was no change of use and it hadn't been vacant for over 12 months, it could, it could have been rehabbed. But that's assuming that it was rehabable, which I don't have the details on that.
I'm just curious if you have an idea of like what the maximum capacity would look like, given like the new guidelines now for that property, if we were to use it for housing?
I would, I don't know the zoning district off the top of my head.
R2.
All right, so two units. Two would be the maximum allowed on that lot.
And I'm sorry, the person that's going to buy is 191?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so that's right next to it. That's the Red House. And, sorry, sorry, I'm just thinking out loud.
Let's, you know, you know the area, that's fine.
And you said that this was sent out in February for people to buy this property? And what, what's their plan? Do, do they have, do they have to have a plan to use this? Like what are, what do they plan to do with this, with this lot?
They're, they submitted a site plan. They want to put a gar, a garden, vegetable garden, and a shed on that property.
Yeah, I think they're, and I understand that applications that represent a plan are required as part of these sales, but I want to still make sure I can understand beautifying a neighborhood and giving residential homeowners an opportunity to expand their properties, but again, I hesitate to prioritize that over all residents within the city having an opportunity to obtain permanent housing. How are the properties sold via the side lot program tracked and monitored? With the requirement that they are only used as green space, et cetera?
Those requirements would be put in, in the form of deed restrictions, if it has to stay green, or if they have to combine the lots, things of that nature.
Do we have a list of properties sold via the side lot program since its inception?
I believe we do.
Could that be provided? I have no further question.
I had a, I had a question about the demol, the demolition. Who paid for that? The city paid for that demolition or the owner?
That's a, that's a good question, but I'm assuming the city paid for it.
Oh, I don't remember. Does anyone remember?
Yeah, we, I think.
Did we vote on that?
We put it in the CDBG budget.
Okay.
Believe.
All right.
Which has more than doubled for demolition purposes in the last few years.
Yes, thank you. It's, it's a lot. I mean, we get a lot of demolition, so I don't remember that, but thank you so much.
No more questions on this RL? Well, we'll move on to the next one, RL 2569. Tito's still our presenter. It's still in the Planning Committee, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmore.
Thank you, President Dundon. So this is RL 2569, an ordinance authorizing the sale of 31 Travis Avenue.
Same idea. This would be sold to the owner of 33 Travis Avenue for use as, as yard space.
Nobody has any questions?
So I, I think I just want to represent the plan. We've discussed how a plan and an application is required. So this property owner in particular, they'd like to, they'd like the property for personal use. They want to extend their privacy fence around the lot to allow for a bigger backyard and recreational use. Again, I want to make sure, and I am fully comfortable stating this on record. I understand wanting to expand residential use, but I am not willing to prioritize that over the opportunity for every resident in the city to have a place to call home.
Only $500 too, or? I'm just curious if there's a previous structure on this lot as well?
There was a, a structure demolished at this location.
Do you have any details regarding like units?
I don't. I know what the building looked like, and it was most likely not more than two units. I, I can look it up right now.
Yeah, Tito, because I have a question off the questionnaire. Question 20, is this site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste, and it was checked for yes? So I'm kind of curious what remediation was done on that site.
I'm looking it up too. On the east side? Travis is on the east side? It is. It's like over the underpath, right?
It's right next to the highway.
Okay.
Line and supply.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Was it north side before? Okay. Okay.
And it is my understanding that it was previously a duplex.
Okay.
Do you have BCGIS in front of you? Is that what?
Sorry?
Do you have BCGIS in front of you?
I do, I do. I did look it up, but.
Okay, do you have the zoning district there?
Heavy industrial.
Okay. So a, a two-family cannot be built there today. In fact, no residential could be built in the heavy industrial district. So I just want to make that point. As far as remediation, the environmental forum, we use the, the DEC's parcel mapper or EAF mapper tool, and he prefills some questions. We can look into what that remediation may have been, but there, there's nothing there that I know of. It's, it's been a, a, a house for a long time. So I don't, I don't think it was a dumping site of any kind, but we can, can check on that.
And that remediation pool, I think it's like a 500-foot radius, so if it's within 500 feet of a site that was subject to it, it gets checked.
Oh, right.
Yeah, being down in that vicinity with Buckingham's been there forever. I know you have a couple refrigeration companies used to be there. I can't think of what's there now, but I mean, I'm sure at one time, everybody was putting stuff in the store. It's just the way it was.
I think Universal used to be over there too.
Yeah, CMP now, it used to be Universal Instruments on Bavir.
I just want to clarify though, Tito, are you saying that there is not, it's not possible to build a structure on 31 Travis Street?
It would not be allowed to build residential units there, yeah.
That's zoning. Zoning. Would have to rezone the area.
Is it, would it be subject to variance?
You could try to get a use variance to build housing there. That would not be likely to be granted. Usually you have to have some unique situation about this property that forces the need to go outside what's allowed. There has to be something unique to this property.
And the need for affordable housing would not be considered unique?
Not to this particular property, and then you also have the issue of building affordable housing in a heavy industrial
Yeah.
area, which is not desirable, and that's why we don't allow residential in the I-3 district.
I think that's a convenient policy for the city that doesn't necessarily take into account the need of families who are otherwise living in hotels or their cars.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I guess the other question is the cost of the city maintaining these properties if we continue to hold on to them. Do you have a sense of, I mean, I, I know there's some sort of long history to the side lot program that brought it to this point, so is there, I mean, right, we mow the lawns.
Right. We do pay to mow the lawns. Sometimes it's done by the Parks Department. Some parcels are, are outsourced, so there is a cost associated with that. You know, trash removal and then loss of tax revenue. Not that we would get a lot of tax revenue from this, but it does put it back on the tax roll.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we shall move on.
Wait, Robert.
I just, I mean, with respect to the overarching goal of doing everything we can to encourage construction of affordable housing in the city, I think in these two instant cases, compared to the inventory of available lots, you have two lots. One that is directly next to a, a commercial-facing Main Street property. It's got commercial building on one side and a parking lot in the back of it. And in the Travis Avenue case, highway behind it and industrial facing it, neither of these are going to be high on anybody's list for actual residential redevelopment, whatever the zoning classification happens to be. I, I think they're probably, Matthews in particular, that buffer zone, adding a little bit more buffer between commercial use and Main Street and that residential neighborhood is probably good use of that land. And the Travis Avenue situation, I mean, that is not, I don't think going to be very attractive for development as a, as a residence. I mean, you're literally between the delivery for, for a line and supply and a highway. So I think, I think we should take a look at our inventory of lots and sort of, you know, have a qualitative look at them. You know, what are, what are good targets for that we should be marketing for redevelopment? We should be really targeting for various types of infill housing programs, block-by-block program and stuff, and what ones are, you know, more, you know, more in line for this type of usage, and I sort of think these are in that latter category.
I don't, just wanted to, oh, can I just cut in really, really quick? I just wanted to say, for Matthews, that was owned by Anzaru, and just like when we had the meeting the last time on Monday, there should have been a plan for those properties. Even if they wanted to do something, the city should have had a plan from the beginning when they took over those properties that could have been, that could have been used for residential properties. I understand the place and, and, you know, not being, you know, a, a place where people live, but essentially there's like 13 apartments in there. You know, I don't know exactly what, you know, the, the condition of the house is, but I feel like there should have been a better plan than just knocking it down before, or there, if, if that was the case, maybe a community discussion on what should have been done, so.
I, I mean, I can, I had looked into that particular property, if you want to answer, and it was basically left empty and open to the elements by previous owner. It was severely, the degradation was severe, and if you, I think you can still look on Google Earth and look down, there's actually an older historic home in the back of it. And then they added this, what would be like maybe a six-unit mid-century commercial, or I'm saying multifamily in front of it, and you know, I think the historical planner was like, is there any way we could even like tear the front of this building off and save the back? And unfortunately, the, all the, the, the interior front of the historic structure had been destroyed when they added that front on it, and there were a lot of older utilities coming from the front to the, or from the back to the front. It was, it was a disaster. I, I it's my opinion, but I, but I think, I, I know there was, there was, I know it was evaluated. I know people went through it with an eye for, is this a savable one? And I, I would err on the fact that it was really far gone. And should the city have been acting sooner? Should the city have, you know, that's, what over the?
The answer to that is yes.
Yes.
And I appreciate what you're representing in terms of examining all of the vacant lots and that portfolio, and I think that's
I think.
Why is, I think with, I think it's also extremely easy for us to sit around this table and talk about whether a, a property or a parcel is marketable for affordable housing compared to fam, again, individuals and families who are experiencing an absolute lack of housing, families who are staying in hotels for nine to 18 months on average with their children, because we do not have enough available housing, affordable housing, specifically deeply affordable housing. So it's very easy for us to talk around this table about what's marketable or what's convenient, but I want to, what I want to point out with the side lot program and, and Madeline, in learning that you're taking over the side lot program, I would hope to have more conversation with you about this, is what feels like a glaring lack of consideration regarding redevelopment, because if there is a possibility that any of these parcels are viable for redevelopment and we can add units to our affordable stock, we have to look at that. We have to look at apps, I mean, Mayor Cram has said it in just the last week, that he is committed to creating more housing. This has to be a part of it. Every opportunity to redevelop sites that we've otherwise just decided are only worth demolishing, we have to switch that. We have to change our strategy, or we're going to continue to see the increases in homelessness that we've seen in the last 15 years, and there is nothing sustainable for our community about that.
I mean, I don't disagree with any of that, except that to say that this is not a situation where it's this or that. We have parcels, we have the inventory to be always this and that. And I, again, I think a comprehensive look at what parcels we have available and kind of grading them would be a, a way to kind of have an answer to this question and a, a plan forward.
Just a comment on, on that. I do think now that we do have this block by block money, this type of lot will be given more consideration for development. Prior as to getting that money, this lots this size um, wouldn't allow the type of project that normally would get funding to build affordable housing. Usually, you know, you have larger projects um, that, that get state and federal funds for affordable housing. And that's sort of been the purpose of the side lot program in the past. So you have these smaller lots that are not easily developed for multi-unit housing. We need to get them on the tax rolls and out of the city's care. And, and that's, that's sort of, that's been the purpose of the side lot program. Now we have an alternative in the block by block program that does allow development on smaller lots because it's for single family homes. So I think there'll be a lot more um, attention paid to these smaller lots in, in terms of uh, looking at them for, for new housing going forward. Uh, but again, these two sort of have been in the pipeline. And um, they're not great. They're not great locations to, to um, build through the block by block program, particularly Travis, which is in an industrial area.
Anybody else? All right, now moving on. So our next presenter is still Tito. This is R L twenty-five dash seventy. It's still in planning and I'm handing it over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Okay, this is R L twenty-five seventy, a resolution establishing seeker for the terminal pump station project.
Um, so uh, this one is, is fairly straightforward. It's for seeker for the terminal pump station project at the joint sewage treatment plant. Uh, the project requires coordinated seeker review, which means one agency is the lead agency is in, is, and is in charge. All the other involved agencies defer to the lead agency. For this project, um, the city council should be the lead agency. So we're starting that process. We've already notified all the other agencies um, that the city will be taking the lead on this. We should have their response within the next ten days. That, that's when their time to respond runs out. Um, and that's pretty much it. Uh, my department's working on draft legislation that we can share with corp counsel and the, and the clerk's office that would um, name city council's lead agency, name the type of seeker action, and uh, give the reasons for a negative declaration so that it would all be one resolution. You know, so we're working on that draft and we can submit that um, when it's available.
Tito, this is a, just for context for folks who may be listening in, this is a joint venture with the Village of Johnson City for a pump station located in Vestal. So how much of and I may not fully be understanding this piece correctly, but how much of the cost will the city be responsible for?
That I don't know. Um, the only information I have is on the seeker part of it. Um.
Will we get that after seeker? I'm also looking at you, Robert.
We, we can pull it up. Nate might remember better than me, actually, because he does more sewage treatment plant stuff. Um, but it's, it's a, it's a, or the mayor. Do you want to chime in on the T P S funding?
I thi- I think we approved a bond for it.
Yes, yeah, so. But I just can't remember off the top of my head.
I think I'm just trying to get, like, if it's a three, it's Village of Johnson City. It's located in the town of Vestal. So which, what percentage is the city of Binghamton responsible for? And if it's all of it, why?
We're taking the lead on the actual project management and construction of it, but it will be borne by the sewage fund. So Johnson City Binghamton owning and sharing cost, and then the other users also, of course, pay into the sewer fund.
So it won't be the sole responsibility of the city of Binghamton.
Correct. And the debt structure is in place already for it.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
And it's on, it ends up, the, the money ends up on the sewage treatment plant books, not on city books technically.
Well, hearing nobody else. Tito, thank you for coming down and have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Mayor, are you filling in for Chuck Robinson?
Or I can. Yeah, I, I can, I can take it.
All right, Bob, here, our corp counsel will be the presenter. This is in finance committee, and I will hand it over to the council member Kavanaugh.
So this is the uh, calculated payout the city will be making from our insurance M fund uh, for uh, the compensation required uh, under the firefighter's contract and general misfortune law two oh eight B. Is that money in here too? So two oh eight B requires that uh, when it, when a firefighter is in line of duty, we pay out um, a year of salary plus a percentage of the firefighter's salary for each of his dependent children. And uh, then we have additional uh, language in our contract and charter that pays out accumulated leave and sick time and comp time and such. And when you add all of that up, you get to the um, um, this number. There it is. Sorry, uh, the uh, one hundred thirty-six thousand, six thirty-seven, forty-three. Um, and we have uh, a relatively healthy balance in the M fund uh, balance to handle this. This won't be coming out of uh, general fund. We don't have to do a transfer like that. Um, and it's um, obviously uh, not only are we uh, contractually obligated to do this, but it's of course uh, the right thing to do. So.
Yeah, the only clarification be that the payment has been made
Oh, there we go.
To the, the spouse already, but we need to move the funding to backfill.
So after corp counsel said that, can I get a motion to expedite?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I was gonna ask that, so that was so funny.
So I have an emotion in second. Can we do a roll call on the expedition?
Councilmember Rathmo, aye. Councilmember Medavetsky, aye. Councilmember Hotchkiss, aye. Councilmember Kavanaugh, aye. Councilmember Middleton, aye. Councilmember Murray, aye. Council President Dundon, aye. Thank you. That's seven zero.
I mean, unless anybody else has anything they'd like to say about this, I think this is just the right thing to do and out of respect for, you know, the loss of a firefighter and a member of the community.
Yeah.
So then we're going to be moving on with our next presenter, Mayor Jared Cram on R L twenty-five dash seventy-one in the committee of public works. And I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Mayor, do you want to talk about this? It's pretty straightforward looking.
Yeah, and, and my apologies, I added an extra zero. Uh, it's not ten million dollars, it's just one million. That's on me. Uh, so this is a really good um, example of just kind of constantly uh, peppering the state and asking for support for different initiatives. Uh, there was some leftover funding as part of the Greater Binghamton Fund in uh, that would be associated towards streetscapes. And so we were able to secure a one million dollar grant from Empire State Development to support phase two of the a deco downtown arts district improvements. Uh, it's about a five million dollar project uh, that that we're just awaiting uh, the approval of this grant to award the contract to extend the arts district improvements that were on State Street uh, along to Henry Street and Washington Street uh, downtown, further supporting uh, the forum, our local downtown restaurants and in improving the walkability and uh, beautification of uh, those streets. So this a million dollar grant is, is really just to offset city costs. Um, it's a great uh, way to pay for basically twenty percent of the project. Uh, this was not something that was known that we were going to get it. Uh, but we uh, bid the project in a way with M W B E and service disabled veteran uh, requirements on there. So this is kind of uh, primed and ready to go. And certainly we thank the state of New York for uh, for supporting us.
Thank you. I, the only thing I really have an issue with or a question about is I, it's been a while since I've seen the plans for the phase two. And I don't remember where I saw them and I tried to find them on the website and I don't think they're published there. Um, that might just be an, an oversight, but there's definitely like, we have the stadium district master plan, but is that something that you would make available?
Yeah, we, we have uh, the, the difference on this one is that the deco district kind of planning document is, I think, out there. What Padasa's or Councilwoman Medavetsky has seen on the, from the traffic board standpoint or actual plans, happy to share those with, with city council.
Thank you. And then is, is it a is a, is it public when this project is going to begin? Or is that?
Yeah, it, it'll begin here um, within the next month or so. Um, we have uh, bids in and we're just awaiting the award of those bids uh, with the acceptance of this grant. That's why it's being asked expedite. Um, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the lowest bidder and, you know, move out. There's some um, considerations being made because May is the busiest time for a lot of the downtown restaurants because of B U graduation, Mother's Day, et cetera. So we're going to be working around that as much as we can, but it will be this construction season and starting as quickly as we can.
I don't have anything else. Does anybody have any?
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing that this was
Make a motion to expedite.
That's what I was gonna ask for. I'll actually second that. So have an emotion in a second. Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rathmo, aye. Councilmember Medavetsky, aye. Councilmember Hotchkiss, aye. Councilmember Kavanaugh, aye. Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember Murray. Council President Dundon, aye. Thank you. That's seven zero.
Does anybody have anything else they would like to ask? Hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So our next presenter is Sarah Denhoff for the city clerk on R L twenty-five dash seventy-two, which is in the employees committee, and I will hand it over to Councilmember Murray.
Yeah. So this is an ordinance to amend the general fund budget to reflect the changes in vital statistics titles and salaries. Um, Sarah, can you provide us with the overview, please?
Sure. Um, so this is really in alignment with all of the discussions that we've had up until this point, starting in budget season and then continuing through our responsibility adjustments in the office. So I'll kind of just go through, there are a couple of things being achieved by this R L that are just reorganizing the infrastructure in our office. The first is going to be that there will be a title change from licensing clerk shared with Vital to senior licensing clerk, which was what was discussed during budget season. I believe that was a mistaken print in the budget. Um, then a title change in the vital statistic budget from licensing clerk to vital statistics clerk, which reflects the reality of that employee's now full-time position now that they are fully over on the vital statistics side. That did include a promotion. So there's an updated salary line for the vital statistics clerk to thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And then the attached budget sheet effectuates the changes that I was just mentioning. So you'll notice that those first transfers essentially effectuate all the money needed to fulfill the vitals clerk budget for the rest of the year. The second transfer fulfills all of the money needed for the senior licensing clerk for the year. And I did ask for expedition because we are very pleased to announce that we have somebody starting in this role this coming Monday. So I'd love to have it all tied up by then.
Does anyone have any questions?
So basically, it's just the names you're just fixing. That's fine.
Yeah, just, just fixing the names to reflect the reality and moving the money around to do that as well.
Fine. It's better to do that now before.
Yes, and I did try to work with the comptroller to make that budget sheet as neat and understandable as possible. Uh, but I know it's a little convoluted, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, that's fine. And everything's okay there. So all we have to do is approve it and then there, there won't be any.
Exactly. And there's no money coming from outside of our budget. It's just moving from department to department within our budget. Thank you for that.
Anybody else?
I guess I'm curious how things are going with the vital statistics sides. Are we seeing that backlog getting tackled that we discussed during budget season?
So we are absolutely caught up with that backlog from our absence from the registrar, but we're also working on a grant application that is nearly completed to actually digitize a lot of those files. So I'm hoping to bring some good news in the form of a grant acceptance R L soon.
I like that.
Anyone else? Hearing none, can I get a motion to expedite?
I'll make the motion.
Have an emotion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, madam clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo. Councilmember Medavetsky, aye. Councilmember Hotchkiss, aye. Councilmember Kavanaugh, aye. Councilmember Middleton, aye. Councilmember Murray, aye. Council President Dundon, aye. Thank you.
No one else has anything they'd like to add to that? We'll move on. So our next presenter is Councilmember Nate Hotchkiss on R L twenty-five dash seventy-four, and this is in the planning committee, and I will hand it over to the chair, Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is R L twenty-five seventy-four, an ordinance to amend O twenty-four ninety-three to provide a legislative intent for deed restrictions related to the sale of city-owned vacant lots on Charlotte Street. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Thank you. So to continue our conversation about vacant lots um, within the city, got this R L before us, but uh, most of us on council are familiar with this. Um, last year, we had approved the sale of four vacant lots that are adjacent to each other on Charlotte Street for the development of affordable housing. Um, and the intention was to sell them to Charles Ackerman. They put in a number of deed restrictions to make sure that um, the city could uh, buy back the property and that it would be designated for, the only thing that could be built there is affordable housing. Um, I don't know how this one piece got in here, my, but my legislative intent was that there was also a piece in the deed restriction that would allow for the city to have the first right of refusal. If um, Mr. Ackerman were to sell the property or look, be looking to sell the property. Um, I did not, I don't know how this got in here, and it's been a sticking point for the property sale to not be finalized. Um, and without the property sale, he can't do any of the other work necessary to to start building this project. So um, what I'm looking to do is um, in section two D, it says the applicant not sell or otherwise transfer the premise to any third party for a period of thirty years from the closing date. Again, not sure how it got there, but we need to resolve it. What I wanted it to um, say was that the city will have the first right of refusal in the event that um, Mr. Ackerman goes to sell the property. So we have the opportunity to purchase it. If we don't want to, he can sell it to somebody else, but we just get the first first uh, stab at it.
Well, if you didn't add letter D into this corp counsel, how did that get added into the contract? Because this is the second contract I've seen that stuff has been added into after we've approved it with um, legislative intent.
So again, this isn't a contract. This is the resolution that city council passed. Um, I'd have to go back and look and see what the history of it was. Um, it maybe it was just that I know the thirty-year time period was thrown around and maybe that got transferred into just a straight thirty-year restriction versus the right of first refusal.
If you can do some digging on that and send that out to us, that'd be great. Thank you.
Is there any other questions about this from?
Do you want this expedited?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's kind of been held up in this holding pattern for a while, and I just want to move forward with this. And if we can get the motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Well, we have a motion in a second for expedition. I guess we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Rathmo, aye. Councilmember Medavetsky, aye. Councilmember Hotchkiss, aye. Councilmember Kavanaugh, aye. Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember Murray, aye. Council President Dundon, aye. Thank you. That's seven zero.
Anybody have anything they'd like to add to that?
Nope.
Hearing none. Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?